Okay, we're going to reconvene this session of Committee of the Hall for May the 8th, 2017. We did open the meeting earlier to have a motion to move into closed session to discuss a property matter, so we're just reconvening now, and I'll pick up where we left off. So I'll now ask the Deputy Mayor if there are any additions to the agenda.
Yes, Your Worship, there's a letter from Patrick Bonneville for Phoenix Genesis Investments, 1226577, Ontario Limited, regarding the Heritage Harbor Townhouse Development requirement for Cultural Heritage Impact Assessment, and the action recommended that the matter be added to the agenda.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? It's carried. Are there any declarations of interest from members of council tonight? If there are not any, Miss Brace, we can proceed.
Yes, Your Worship, we have a delegation by Jerry Ford, a Coburg resident, regarding accessible transportation level of service, and he did submit his document, which is in the agenda.
Okay, well, before I welcome you, Jerry, I just want to say that we have five delegations tonight, and I do ask that all of you be respectful of the 10-minute time limit, so that everyone has a fair opportunity and is treated equally. So I will be watching for the 10-minute time limit. So, welcome, Jerry. You're, I know you're very familiar with the process, so you can proceed at any time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to make this very important presentation to you this evening. From its inception in 2009, the accessible transportation service provided by the town of Coburg is operated on a 15-minute service interval. Whether this service was provided by the town-owned Wheels Bus or by the subcontractor that was engaged to provide this service for those regular transit hours when the Wheels Bus was not being used. This allowed the town to meet its legal obligation under the AODA, which requires that special needs transportation must be offered in the same operating hours as regular transit hours. In a normal week, this regular transit schedule consists of 85 hours of services. On weekdays, it runs from 6:15 in the morning until 7:45 in the evening. Saturdays, the hours are 8:15 until 6:45, and on Sundays, from 8:45 until 3:45. Eighty-five hours of special needs transportation to match the regular transit hours, of course, based on a 15-minute service interval, is equivalent to 340 rides being provided in a normal week. The Wheels Bus operates for only 37 and one-half hours. So the subcontractor is picking up the balance of the service hours. The Wheels Bus accounts for 150 of these 15-minute service intervals, leaving the subcontractor with the responsibility for delivering up to 190 trips to Wheels users. These are Wheels registers. The original 2009 subcontract that expired in 2014 was put to an RFP in 2015 by the town to look for the next, to cover the next five years. As a result, the town awarded a five-year contract for services to a company called BTS to cover these 190 15-minute service intervals, which represents 47 and a half hours per week. Now, 15 minutes is not much time. It's not much time to get a wheelchair loaded into a van, transported to the location it's going to, disembarked, and then the vehicle moved on to the next location for the next pickup. But that was a timing that was determined by the Engineering Department in 2009. While the Wheels Bus continues to operate on this 15-minute service interval, a change was made, oh, a couple of months ago now, when the BTS service was changed to a 20-minute service interval per booking. This change meant that the maximum number of trips was reduced from 190 trips to 142 trips. A reduction in services to people, the most vulnerable people in this, in the town. A reduction in services of over 25 percent. There are several problems with this, and that, of course, consists of the fact that the contract was, BTS was signed based on a 15-minute interval, and I do not, I am not aware of council approving a revision to that contract. Reduction of the pickup frequency without otherwise expanding the service in a compensated way has resulted in a reduction, as I said, of 25 percent in the service level provided to vulnerable citizens, and that is in violation of the AODA legislation. The Wheels service that runs from 8:15, 8:00 AM until 3:15 PM during the week continues to use the 15-minute time slot, so it's an inconsistency of service that really doesn't make a lot of sense. And it leaves those dependent on the transit service to have to pick the time of day they go on to determine whether, in fact, they get a ride. It's a little bit discriminatory, I think, in terms of that's that ability, that selection ability. Now, to be clear, BTS did not profit from this change. The town did not profit from this change. But what happened was the vulnerable citizens of this town have absorbed the change. They have been asked to tolerate a reduction in service levels, the established service levels of transportation, and that, as I said, is against the law. This reduction is morally incorrect. It's simply the wrong thing to do. So how is this accomplished that we can fix it? Because the town has to fix it. In the short run, there is only one option, and that is the town require that the 20-minute interval be reversed, that BTS revert to the 15-minute interval time period that they had. This, of course, is only a short-term measure because, as I mentioned earlier, the 20 minutes, the 20-minute timeframe is more realistic in terms of getting the job done properly and safely. And to accomplish that, we need to consider restructuring the whole program. However, we can't do it at the cost of reducing the service by 25 percent at a time when the town has experienced a 5 percent growth since the last census, and that 5 percent growth is the same as it is in Canada, if you remember. And it also has the added benefit of having an aging population. Now, there's a second, the second option that's necessary, and I think the option that has to be taken, is for the town to authorize BTS or someone else to pick up the other times, the other 48 slots. Those 48 slots that have to be made available so that we maintain the 190 spots that are available for people to ride the bus.
Okay, Jerry, you have two minutes to wrap up.
I would very much like the town to consider doing that very thing. It would cost the town $400 a week to correct the problem that has been created by the town subcontractor operating, obviously, in relationship to the town. Now, as an addendum, at the end of the information I had provided, I talked about the census. Now, last Wednesday, the census information that is printed here came out. It was released, and the reporting format has changed, but we were able to determine certain things. In 2011, 26.4 percent of the Coburg population was over 65 years of age. In 2016, the number has risen to 36.9 percent. That is a number that is probably applicable to the rising demand in the Wheels Bus service. And the Wheels Bus service has, in effect, cut it by 25 percent. I asked council to reverse that decision and then consider adding additional service, either through BTS or one of the taxi companies in town, to provide this service and spend the $400 that it takes to correct the problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jerry, for that presentation. You've obviously done a lot of research. I'm just now going to open up to members of council who may have some questions of clarity to, so they fully understand, you know, what it is that you're discussing here. Any members of council have any questions of clarity for Jerry? Counselor Darling?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, when you said your 15-minute intervals, but then you said they moved it to 20, but you commented that 15 wasn't enough time to get the Wheels trans and get on and off. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. The 15 minutes is rushed.
So...
So we should be going to 20-minute intervals, but that doesn't change the level at which the service demand is. The service demand is screened at the 190 service intervals.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. Counselors, again.
Thanks, Jerry. I'm also confused. In your letter, you write, "So how is this accomplished? In the short run, there's only one option available. The town must reverse the 20-minute timeframe back to 15 minutes, so it is conforming with the law." Can you explain that difference? I'm confused as well.
Well, the law states that you have to, you cannot reduce the quality of service or the level of service. And the level of service that is accomplished by reducing it from 15 minutes, I'm sorry, changing it from 15 minutes to 20 minutes, you are effectively reducing the service to the community by 25.2 percent, actually. And that reduction is what is illegal. Going to the 20-minute interval requires a total revamping of the system, so that, in fact, we do maintain the level of rides that are needed to meet the needs of our citizens.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Counselors, again? Okay, other members of council, any further questions, clarity? Seeing none, then again, Jerry, thank you very much for your presentation.
Your Worship, at this time, we have Elmer Bogay, Coburg resident, regarding damage to a tire from construction work.
Okay, welcome, Elmer. Elmer, is it?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council, I think we are here wasting each other's time because the old saying, "You can't find the city hall." And I, the last six months, I've been proven that's not just a saying, but is happening. During the construction at Division Street, I came home one night, and I picked up three nails on the right side of my car, and I told to call Mr. Peacock. I called Mr. Peacock, and he told me, very short term, "The town is not responsible to pick up a nail." And I, having a little bit heart healing, I'm 81 years old, so the next day, I came down to Mr., to see Mr. Peacock, and I said, "Well, not just one nail, and not just on King Street or somewhere, it was on the construction site." He told me I should contact the company in Barry to complain to that company. Now, I wasn't the one who awarded that contract to that company in Barry, A, my complaint. B, I came to the town hall meeting, the mayor was on the way, I was talking to somebody, I forgot, and they said they're going to get back to me when I explained what it cost me $250 and so forth. So six months went by, and nobody bothered to call or try to adjust that. So that's why I'm here. And it wasn't just to pick up the nail on King Street or somewhere. I picked up three nails on the right side of my car, it was coming. So it's very obvious to, it was some nails dropped there, and they didn't pick it up. And what is really joking, to have that go to the construction company in Barry, which I have nothing to do with, is just like if you go to the restaurant, and you get very sick, and the owner would say, "Oh, I got the meat from Canada Packers. Why don't you go to Mississippi to complain?" So that's why I thought I have the right to explain my very, very hurt that the city would, would treat me like that. And then I told some people, well, I said, "I never heard a better joke than this." And somebody asked me, said, "Do you ever give Mr. Peacock a Christmas present?" I said, "Why, no, why should I? Well, maybe the contracting company does." So that's anyway what I thought I ought to tell the council. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I just have one question for you. Did you ever contact the contractor?
No, I didn't. Why should I?
All right. I just, just wanted to make sure. Any members of council have any questions for Mr. Bogay? Okay, Counselor Darling?
Actually, my question is for Mr. Peacock. I just want to confirm, when we do let these contracts out, the contractor is responsible to have liability insurance for issues that happen during construction? If, I'm just thinking, if they were digging a hole, and there was a barricade, and somebody went down, didn't see the barricade, drove into the hole, and wrote their vehicle off, the construction company would be liable for that as well, would they not?
Through Your Worship, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselors, again.
Again, to Mr. Peacock. Again, with the contractors, are they not required to clean up after their work? I mean, this should have been prevented, and to have a resident have to come to council and complain at this level seems a little ridiculous personally. So do they have to clean up after their work or not?
If I may, yes, they are responsible for the construction site, and it should be clean, and it should be passable by, by cars and pedestrians if it's open to the public.
Okay. Other questions? Well, Mr. Bogay, is that the, if not, well, then, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bogay. We've all heard your story now. Thank you.
Would I hear from the mayor, or the town council, or Mr. Peacock? Because that's, the time goes by. It's almost six months now, or I just...
Yes, you, yes, you will hear from either, you'll hear from, you'll get a letter from the staff at some point. Do we, do we have your address, your contact information?
Yes, Mr. Peacock has the bill of the tire company.
And you will, you will hear back from us.
Thank you.
Your Worship, at this time, we have Bruce Buller, Tom Shea, and Tony Walker from the Council of Canadians regarding the Blue Dot National Campaign started by the David Suzuki Foundation.
Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening to you and to the Deputy Mayor and Counselors and staff. My name is Bruce Buller. I think a lot of you do know me. Unfortunately, Tony Walker can't be here tonight. Tom Shea is here with me, and I'll ask Tom to come up. We're fortunate to have Tom. He was a key member of the Durham Region Blue Dot Campaign, and he has now moved to Coburg, and he's helping us with our Northumberland campaign. So why Blue Dot? I think it's pretty obvious. From space, that's our planet, and we only have the one planet. Oh, and by the way, I also wanted to mention, we have the Blue Dot Posse in the audience, as you might have known, the sea of blue.
The group of you do stand out, Bruce.
So it all started with the idea that, what's more important than the right to breathe fresh air, drink clean water, and eat healthy food? So they, I'm going to start with the bottom of these goals. Really, what the David Suzuki Foundation wants to do is to get the right to a healthy environment entrenched into the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms at the federal level. In order to do that, they feel it would be very valuable to have the provinces put the right to a healthy environment in an environmental bill of rights in each one of those provinces. In order to do that, they've started where the rubber meets the road, in municipalities. So that's why we're here. This year, the local Council of Canadians chapter has made it their key project to run a Blue Dot Northumberland campaign, and to go to all seven of the municipalities in the county and ask for a municipal declaration, as we'll talk about. So this is very surprising to me. In Canada, a wonderful Canada, with our pristine waters, all our wilderness, we do not have anywhere in our constitution, in our charter, a recognition that our citizens have the right to live in a healthy environment. 110 nations have done this, but Canada has not. It's a simple yet powerful idea that Canadians have the right to breathe fresh air, drink clean water, and eat healthy food. And the Council of Canadians in particular has gotten behind this because of some of the water issues in Northumberland, and the drought that we had last year pointed out, that, you know, clean water is, is something that isn't always a given. Every Canadian deserves a future that is healthy and, and secure, and the Suzuki Foundation wants to bring together people from all walks of life. So, again, is there some disturbing figures and statistics, that half of all Canadians live in areas where they're exposed to unsafe levels of air pollution? We have no national safety standards for drinking water and air quality. The total costs of pollution in Canada are more than $100 billion a year. So, I mean, there's, there's an economic side to this as well. And it's, it's heavily supported, and over 100,000 Canadians have signed petitions supporting the Blue Dot movement. Now, what is a municipal declaration? So it's a commitment to principles that will protect, fulfill, and promote the right to a healthy environment. It is non-binding. It aligns with establishing sustainable community policies, and critical to changing the charter, as I mentioned at the beginning. One reason why we have come to Coburg first is we feel Coburg is already doing a lot of these things. Coburg's well on the way. We, we salute this council and past councils for having established very high drinking water standards for Coburg and keeping that infrastructure up. So we're not here because we think there's a problem. We're here because we want to protect the future, and we want this council to make that, that declaration. So, what would the Coburg Declaration do? For, for one thing, we would be the first municipality in the county to adopt such a commitment. We would add to the growing number of municipalities nationally that have signed on. Now, unfortunately, I think number 150 has been taken. I was going to say, "We could beat 150 in Canada's 150th year," but I think it actually did get taken. But we can be close. And we can show the citizens of Coburg the priority that you place on their health and well-being. So this is, this is what we're asking. We would like to have a motion that this be sent to staff to create a Coburg-specific municipal declaration. Now, I mean, staff could do this on their own. There's lots of municipal declarations out there. We have some expertise, particularly with Tom. We have examples from Ajax and other municipalities in the Durham Region that would be a starting place. So it shouldn't be a huge amount of work to, to do this. I love our slogan, "Coburg is Ontario's feel-good town." Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you, Bruce. Very, very interesting presentation, and you're, you're right, we are a feel-good town. I'm just a little confused when you say it's a non-binding agreement. What is it you're asking us to sign up for, if we were to sign an agreement? Is there a stand, are there different levels or standards for the, for Blue Dot?
Uh, no, not really. Again, I didn't, I don't have the example right with me. Ajax is a, is a good example. Can you, can you maybe speak to that, Tom?
Yeah. So, non-binding mean that there's no legal ramifications. What it is, a statement in principle for decisions that you make throughout the council, whether it's transportation, waste management, that you consider the citizen's right to a healthy environment with the decisions that you make, and that's what the declaration says. And we have many examples that we can provide.
Okay. Thank you. Other members of council? Deputy Mayor Henderson, Counsel McCarthy, next.
Through Your Worship, thank you, Bruce, as always, and Tom, for being here. The only question I have, is there any kind of annual membership or do so that if council were to certainly support this, that we get something on a regular basis, or staff might in terms of how in terms of helping us with our direction as we move forward?
There's no membership per se, but part of the declaration is when you do adopt it, and I know that you will, is sending it to not only the Northumberland County, but also the other municipalities across the country, as well as the provincial premier and to the federal government. So, it's bringing that awareness to that level. Does that answer your question?
Go ahead.
If I can ask a subsequent question? Would you also be looking for, if councils so decide to support this, for us to use this as a letter of support to AML? And AML represents the Association Municipalities of Ontario, which there are 444 in Ontario?
Exactly.
So, would that be in your line of thinking as well?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Councillor McCarthy?
Something like 52 municipalities in Ontario that have already signed on.
Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it just a coincidence through you to our presenters that we have the blue flag and the Blue Dot programs that are both associated with the environment?
I think it's a great coincidence, by the way. But, yes, you have a blue flag certification and the Blue Dot Declaration, I think, would be a great tie-in.
Okay, follow-up?
And do you have a flag too? A Blue Dot flag?
We have a banner. I can, I'm going to take a picture a little later.
Okay, councillor Darling?
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. I'm firmly in support of it. I'm just concerned that, I guess not concerned, but wondering if you've heard any negative aspects towards this. I mean, you're familiar with it, it's new to us. Have you heard any negative aspects in regard to this situation at all?
I can just, the common one I've heard is the economic impact or around the legal implications. But, as we said, it's a non-binding agreement. But, I mean, there's always economic impacts to anything that you put through in council. Right? So, we think of it as, you know, the costs that would be incurred if we didn't take these rights into consideration. When we talked about the health costs alone. So, it's a matter of cost benefit, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of council? Councillors, again, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Bruce and Tom. How many, you mentioned there's 40-some in Ontario. How many across Canada? And how old is the Blue Dot Movement?
So, the Blue Dot Movement started in the fall of 2014. David Suzuki did a national tour. I was actually at the Richmond Hill event and that's how I got involved. And from there, starting in January 2015, we started as a grassroots movement to try and get municipal declarations across the country. And in just this limited amount of time, we built it up to 150 municipalities. There's 53 in Ontario. From the Great Lakes Corridor, Windsor, Hamilton, Waterloo, Kingston, Toronto, it's a big one. They were the 100th, they wanted to get that threshold. So, we think it makes perfect sense, especially along the Great Lakes Corridor.
Councillor Darling, again?
I guess it's a question to you, your worship. I don't see a delegation action here. Is it appropriate we put something forward, if we may?
It would be. We have delegation actions at the end of all the delegations. So, since you're filling in for councillor Rowden, you will have the opportunity to make a delegation action. It's pretty hard to argue with safe air, water, and good food.
I do agree.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Bruce, again, for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your worship, at this time, we have Jack Boyajin from the Northumberland Players requesting funding to assist with the costs associated for Northumberland Players to participate in the 2017 Ontario Theatre Festival.
Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me again, councillors.
And I think it's the first time I've had an opportunity to publicly, you know, congratulate you on your civic award.
Yes, I'm walking around town very proudly and carrying my award on my shoulder sometimes, so...
Good for you.
When I visit people.
Much deserved.
Thank you. Just going to push my stopwatch here. Do I just push the left one? Okay. I believe this is the third time I've come to council sort of for bragging rights of some of the accomplishments of Northumberland Players and sort of come here again for that. But, this is the first time I've actually come to ask for money. Just a little bit of background in... Am I pushing the wrong thing? Just a little bit of background. The EODL Festival is the Eastern Drama League Festival. It is a, they call it festivals, but really it's a competition. The eastern region sends its theatre productions to be adjudicated. It's an educational process and a play is selected. Last year, Boeing Boeing won the Eastern Ontario Championship and then went on to, in Peterborough, then went on to North Bay and it won the best play, including 14 other awards, representing Coburg in the Ontario Festival. So, we were very proud of that and I did announce that last year. So, this year, we entered again. This year, it was not a festival where you have to travel the first leg, they come to you, which is great because we save some money there. And lo and behold, waiting for the parade, we had a play that was in, because it's a Canadian play for the 150th anniversary about the war. And waiting for the parade won again and we're very happy. But, this time, it goes to Ottawa. Last year, it went to North Bay. And it goes to Ottawa, which is very appropriate, I think, for the 150th. And that competition is on the 17th. It actually runs for five days, but we have our show on the 17th. So, that's, there's some background of that. I usually know how to work these things. Oh, there it is, okay. There's just a quick picture of the cast and crew. I believe 18 people will be going. About 50 people were involved in putting on the play and 500 people from Coburg and area saw the play at the Far Hall Theatre. Education is the major focus when you get adjudicated. We learn and we get better at it. But, definitely, it puts Coburg on the map in these large festivals. I'm just showing you what happens when you go to Ottawa. You can see that they take one champion play from each of the regions. We are representing the east region. And then, the four best plays in all of Ontario compete at this festival. And you can see the names of the other festivals and all of them are pretty large cities. So, we really have some stiff competition. And as probably most of you know, we just had a costume fashion show. I don't know if anyone went here, but we have an amazing fashion, sorry, costume department and 15,000 costumes and we rent a space for it and it's growing. And that was definitely one of the things that got us some nominations as well. It has a historical significance. It's a great World War II story. And we've, in the last two years, to talk about the finances, we've had three remounts and that is, we've had to take the entire play three times. Luckily, this year, it wasn't four times, two last year, and once this time. And of course, it adds up. And those are the two plays that actually went. And we ended up being able to finance the first two legs, I guess, last year, Peterborough and North Bay. And together, those two have added up to about $12,000. I'm not going to have everyone, I'm not going to read all that. Basically, I think it's a worthwhile cause because I think, once you get to the provincial level, you're representing Coburg, not just the Northumberland Players. And it's pretty local. I realize we're sort of tooting our own horn for our organization. But, right now, particularly with the emphasis on the 150th anniversary, we're going to the big city of Ottawa and it would be really nice to have the support of council and Coburg and of course, some financial support. I've submitted a budget for the agenda. This year, the estimate is just under $5,000. Last year, the Peterborough one, I believe it was about 1,500 and then close to 5,000 to go to North Bay. We raised all that money and individuals also had to pay to be able to go there. And so, this year, we'd like to actually help. We've asked them to raise $1,000, which they're really trying hard to do, individual people. And so, you can see that it actually adds up. We are a pretty efficient group. Instead of renting a fancy bus and a big truck, we're actually going with our own cars and representing rural Ontario by taking a horse trailer for our stuff. So, yeah, someone has a very large horse trailer, so we're not, we're really going on the cheap. We really are happy that Coburg always represents us anyways. It's, this is not one of those, give us $1,000 or else we will not, you know, waive the Coburg fee. We will anyways, we'll be bragging, we're from Coburg anyways. So, it really will not change anything in our whole publicity approach to the event and our celebration afterwards because Coburg is, the town of Coburg is so supportive. We attach that logo to everything that we do in town and all 10,000 programs and we're very proud of what Coburg does for us and the town does for us. And that's Ottawa Little Theatre, which really was weird when I looked it up because it doesn't look very little. And so, that's where we're going and we're really looking forward to it. And there's just a little recap of the expenses. And that's the poster. And this was our 40th anniversary too. So, it's quite wonderful that we actually won the Eastern Ontario one in the 40th anniversary. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Jack. Actually, as you know, I attended your 40th anniversary dinner.
It was a lot of fun.
Very, a lot of fun and very, very successful. To be commended for that. I'm going to open up to members of council who may have some questions for Jack. Councillor McCarthy, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jack, and thanks to everything Northumberland Players gives to this community. Is this a competitive event in Ottawa? There's a chance you'd win something there and go to a higher level?
No, this is the top, it is competitive, but this is the top. The provincial one is the top. So, the four best teams in all of Ontario meet there. They call it a festival in the spirit of festivals, I guess. But, really, it's competitive because by then, you want to win, right? And, but no, that you advance after the Eastern Ontario and then all four of the regions now go to that provincial competition.
And so, in that vein, there's a chance you might win the province?
I hope so, yes. That's pretty amazing to win it two years in a row. That's pretty incredible.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Jack? Councillor Sagan and councillor Darling?
Thank you, Jack, and thank you for the 150 years of fashion. That was phenomenal. I thoroughly enjoyed that. I just, I don't think $1,000 is a lot, but, you know, I think it would be great to represent Coburg. But, we do have criteria, obviously, for community grants, as I mentioned in my email to you earlier. So, hopefully, we can find something. If not, maybe somebody is listening that will also help fund this. But, I certainly would support anything that council would do.
This is one of the, sorry, may I just respond? Is it possible to do that quickly, to respond?
Pardon, Jack?
Is it possible to respond to that, the timing? We're aware of that, but it's really hard to apply for something when you don't know you're going to win. And that's one of the problems we're having with sponsors as well. We would have started a long time ago, but now we have like a three-week window to go and ask people for money. Because you can't go, hey, in case we win, would you give us money? So, it's one of those unfortunate things. But, it's, we're still proud of it.
Councillor Darling, you were next, and then, I believe, the deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, Jack, again, thank you for everything you do for the community. And I too am in support of this. But, because we do have, Suzanne mentioned, we do have the criteria that we use. We just had a request from a local ball team for, the Legion for the Nationals for local ball tournament. And the request came through council to fill out a community grants form. So, I'd like to ask the same of you in that if you could possibly fill out a community grants form and bring it forward, just so we keep things equal for everybody.
Yeah, I did show one out, even though it's after the date, yes.
Okay, deputy mayor Henderson, you were next.
Yes, your worship, and thank you, Jack. As always, I just wanted to comment, they did submit earlier on time, as Jack indicated, could submit this because they didn't know about the results. And to make council aware, when we have our deliberations, we do have a contingency fund for such things as this spring up to a surprise to everyone because there's no way the Northumberland Players could have thought of this back in October.
Okay, any more questions for Jack? Well, again, thank you very much, Jack, for your presentation and all that you do.
Thank you for listening.
We very much appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
There will be a delegation action coming later in the agenda.
Your worship, at this time, we have Andrew Hall from the Santa Claus Parade Committee regarding the 2017 Santa Claus Parade.
Welcome, Andrew. Glad to see you back here. I know you've had a low profile lately, so it's good to see you.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, staff members. Yeah, the hat I wear tonight is red velvet with white trim. I didn't wear it, I apologize. And Santa's still on vacation, he couldn't join us either. I do have a statement that I'd like to read on behalf of the Santa Claus Parade Committee. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm accompanied with Ron Weeby, who is president of the Coburg Lions Club and also chair of the Santa Claus Parade Committee. If council has any questions for him afterwards, he'll join me up here at the microphone. "In January of this year, our small committee of volunteers sent you a letter outlining a few pressing concerns which we felt threatened the future of our Santa Claus Parade. Some of those concerns involved our committee members who, under no governing body, were without liability insurance. Another concern was funding. The Coburg Lions Club, one of our two presenting partners, was faced with having to choose between funding the parade and other very important community projects. Now, unmentioned in our letter, we also faced a logistical challenge. For years, the parade committee has relied upon the generosity of MJ Group to provide a trailer and large enough working space for us to prepare Santa's float. As the MJ Group continued to expand, though, they had less and less space to offer us. Now, tonight, we would like to thank you, council, for accepting our letter and directing members of staff and council to work with us in seeking out solutions. Town staff have since provided us sufficient space in a municipal building to complete Santa's float this year and this satisfies a major concern of ours. And while Santa himself is not terribly picky about the float, some of his helpers are, I assure you. In response to our need for insurance, town staff have pledged to assist us in finding appropriate and affordable coverage. In terms of funding, after hearing our story, members of the community have come forward to help the Lions Club. In addition, town staff and councillor Sagan have pledged to assist wherever they can in encouraging sponsorships from members of the business community. This is significant as we cannot expect our two presenting partners, the Coburg Lions Club and the Coburg DBIA, to fund this parade on their own. Our parade must be a community effort. Indeed, this is an event that must be produced for the community, by the community. We are very pleased that those who have met with us over the last several months have created a sense of renewed commitment and overall enthusiasm regarding the parade. The Santa Claus Parade Committee, Coburg Lions Club, Coburg DBIA, and the town of Coburg have all come together. And with a commitment to ongoing review and refinement, we are excited to announce that the parade committee is no longer prepared to disband. So, in closing, we'd like to extend our thanks personally to Dean Huswick, Theresa Bayon, Laura Scott, and councillor Sagan from the town, as well as Adam Bureau and Paige Montgomery, along with the Coburg DBIA, for working with us and offering their ongoing support. We also thank those community sponsors who support and participate in the parade year after year and encourage all individuals, organizations, and businesses of Coburg to get involved and help us continue the 62-year legacy of the Coburg Santa Claus Parade. Thank you."
Well, thank you very much, Andrew. Of course, this has been a hot topic around town for a while. And I'm so glad to see that, you know, you're continuing on with it, as is Ron in the back row. And I don't, it's not like Ron to be sitting in a back row. He's a... But anyway, we very much appreciate your commitment to the continuation of this. He's a, but anyway, we very much appreciate your commitment to the continuation of the Santa Claus Parade. I'm going to ask members of council if they have any questions for you. Counselor Seguin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. You summarized everything beautifully, except for not wearing the Santa Claus suit. Very disappointing. The proposals, the sponsorship packages, where can we get those and how can we get those out so that once now that the word is out there, we can get some members of the community that maybe haven't sponsored in the past to do so? Is that going to be online somewhere, Andrew, or?
Yes, it will be available online when the time comes, Counselor. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none. Again, thank you, Andrew, for coming forward with this, and also Ron for attending and supporting. Thank you.
Your Worship, at this time, we have, I believe, delegation actions, the first being for Blue Dot and the second for Northumberland Players.
Okay, I guess we'll start with the Jerry Ford's presentation, if you will. Counselor Darling filling in for Counselor Rowden as a transportation issue.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I'd like to propose that we refer this issue to staff for a letter, as requested by Mr. Ford.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? It's carried. Deputy Mayor Henderson, would you take the next one? Or Mr. Bogay, since it is a general government?
I'd be happy to. The act recommended that Mr. Bogay receive a response from staff report.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Carried. And we're back to you, Counselor Darling, for the Blue Dot.
Yes, Your Worship. Yes, I'd like to show our support for the Blue Dot by referring it to staff and have them draw up a declaration in reference to it.
Okay. Further discussion on the Blue Dot. All in favor? Carried. Great presentation, Bruce. And so now we're back to a financial matter. Deputy Mayor Henderson, with respect to Jack Boyajans on behalf of Northumberland Players.
At this point, the act recommended is that, is Jack still here? Can I ask one question of clarification?
Absolutely.
Jack, just a question, is there any essence of time? Because I know you're already heading to Ottawa. Is it more importantly that we just look at this and get back to you in a reasonable time, or is there, or is time of the essence?
Basically, what happens is everybody that goes, they spend their money. It comes out of their pocket, and then they submit bills, and then we try and see what we can cover, and sometimes we can cover it and sometimes we can't. We're still looking for another $900 beyond this as well, so they'll, the money, the bills come in after they come back.
Okay, so if we had this recommended for June, that would still be reasonable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, thank you, Worship. The act recommended is that Northumberland Players' request for, I believe it was, a thousand dollars to attend the 2017 Ontario Theatre Festival in Ottawa be reviewed and hopefully come back to council before June or the end of June.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? It's carried. And the very last one, I'm not sure if we need a delegation action. It was more for information. Yeah. So Counselor Seguin, if you just want to do a receipt for information.
Thank you, Your Worship, with regard to the Santa Claus Parade, just delegation action, just to receive for information purposes, and leave it at that.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Carried.
Your Worship, at this time, we have the Economic Development Services.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Henderson, I'm going to pass the chair over to you.
Thank you, Worship. There's a memo from the Secretary of Coburg Economic Development Advisory Committee recommending a revised terms of reference for the committee. The act recommended that council endorse the recommendation of the Coburg Economic Advisory Committee and authorize the preparation of a bylaw to revise the terms of reference for the Economic Advisory Committee as presented and attached to the memo. I believe it was self-explanatory, but I'd be happy to take any questions. Counselor Darling and Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just looking at this, this is just from my understanding, a cleanup of the document, housekeeping.
That is correct. We took some time, and the reason being because we had a number of members both in and out, and we thought it was fair to get the perspective of the newest members as well. That's why this was delayed coming forward, but when you look at it, we think it actually cleans up some of the language. That's what's being proposed. And Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question's related to the composition of the committee, and I know our procedural bylaw, or the advisory committee bylaw suggests most, that advisory committees can have, usually have seven, but I know there are exceptions, and one or two can be on, council members can be appointed to an advisory committee. I was just wondering why we have two councillors, and there could be perfectly reasonable explanation, but I'm just wondering why.
And perhaps I could ask the mayor, he may have more history on this one than myself, because as long as I've been here for six years, it's always been two, but Your Worship, if you could help me out on this one?
Absolutely. Chair Henderson, so it has long been a standing tradition in the town of Coburg that both the mayor and the deputy mayor share responsibilities with economic development. So, and as you may or may not know, when we do a lot of our business calls, the deputy mayor comes along as well, so he's very much a part of what we're doing in economic development.
So that's the history. I know I've been there just recently because of my role, but I know prior to me, Deputy Mayor Frost passed, was a member as well as the Coburg Economic Development Advisory Committee. Are there any other questions, members of council? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Against? Carried.
Your Worship, we now have General Government Services.
There's a memo from the Secretary of Coburg Downtown Business Improvement Area Board of Management regarding acceptance of an occupancy agreement between the Coburg DBIA and the town of Coburg for use of office space in the Market Building, including reciprocal off-season tourism services. The act recommended that council authorize preparation of a bylaw authorizing the mayor municipal clerk to execute an agreement between the Coburg Downtown Business Improvement Area and the town for use of office space in the Market Building, including the terms of reference, and further that there will be no fees charged to the Coburg DBIA for the office space based on the terms of the agreement, which include enhanced programming and reciprocal tourism services. Just in quick summary, we've been at this for some time. I'd like to thank the direction of CEO Stephen Peacock, along with Director Huswick, who was involved, and also the DBIA board. I can tell you this went back and forth for an extensive period of time, and I can tell you that to council that the DBIA board did approve a motion of support of this particular recommendation. I'm pleased to answer any questions or details at this point. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Because of the heritage nature of the farmer's market, signage is not permitted on the building, as I understand. However, I do have a concern how the public will know that this is the Tourism Information Centre. Usually, when we visit a town, there's some sense of where it is, whether it's a letter "I" or whatever, but I'm assuming they'll be able to put a sandwich board out and perhaps even one up closer to King Street?
Yes, you're quite right, Counselor McCarthy. It has some restrictions because of its heritage nature, but due to that, we are going to work on approved sandwich-type boards, both in the front of King Street and to the different side streets to direct them. As well, we're looking at what poles DBIA can put their banners on, that they'll pay for, that will direct them to the Market Building, not only just as DBIA, but also tourism. And to make known to the public when it's in use, this also makes the washrooms far more accessible to the public, which is really great news for everybody. Are there any more questions, members of council? Hearing none, I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor? Against? Carried. There is a letter from Kathleen Picart, Registered Nurses Association of Ontario, Durham, Northumberland Chapter, requesting proclamation of Nursing Week from May 8th to May 14th, 2017. The act recommended that council proclaim the week of May 8th to May 14th, 2017, as Nursing Week in the town of Coburg, recognizing the importance of the health and well-being of people in this municipality. Encourage everyone to recognize the many services provided by dedicated nurses and the tremendous contribution they make to the health and well-being of its citizens every day. I believe this speaks for itself, and I think if Counselor Rowden were here tonight, he would certainly be jumping up to improve this one, just because I know the in-depth care that his wife certainly received over these past many months. Is there any questions, clarification? Seeing none? All those in favor? Against? Carried. There's a memo from the Bylaw Enforcement Policy Coordinator regarding a bylaw to amend the Refreshment Bylaw Number 43-2015. The act recommended that council authorize preparation of a bylaw to amend Bylaw Number 43-2015, being a bylaw to regulate, license or regulate refreshment vehicles within the town of Coburg, to provide an update on provisions related to special events, and operating refreshment vehicles during special events, and in addition to the exemptions for refreshment vehicle license for individuals and businesses under a town of Coburg service contract agreement. And I do want to applaud council because over the last two years, we continually tried to amend our refreshment vehicle bylaws, A, to ensure that we're protecting the corporation and the town of Coburg in terms of liabilities, and at the same time, try to reach common ground with special events and interest groups, where we're trying to level out the playing field. I feel we're doing that because we're constantly revising this bylaw. I believe this is the second or third time it's been before, so if there are any questions, I'll certainly do my best to answer them. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Against? Carried.
Your Worship, we now have Parks and Recreation Services.
Counselor Darling, it's your turn to take the chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a memo here from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding an agreement between the Coburg Downtown Business Improvement Area in the town of Coburg for use of the office area in the Market Square Building, as the Coburg DBIA office to share the provisions of our tourism offices. The action is that council authorize the municipal clerk and mayor to execute a lease agreement with the downtown business improvement area for shared office space in the Market Building in Coburg. Any questions? I think it's pretty straightforward. Okay, all those in favor? Those opposed, if any? Secondly, I have a memo from the Secretary of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee regarding the flag project in Rotary Waterfront Park. The action recommended here that council endorse the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and authorize the installation of one flag pole in Rotary Waterfront Park, as requested by the Rotary Club of Coburg, pending the coordination with the town staff regarding the additional flags as part of the Victoria Hall Square Project. Is there any questions in regard to this? If I may, at this time, I asked our Acting Director of Recreation, Theresa Bayon, if she could elaborate a little bit on the proposal by the Rotary Club and where we stand with the addition of the other flags. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Darling. It is my understanding that the Rotary Club is paying up to $10,000, and that will include the installation and supply of three flag poles at Rotary Park.
Chair Darling, I did have one question from the President of Rotary, and her question was, would the town allow on very special occasions, special rotary occasions, allow them to fly the rotary flag at, you know, for a short period of time?
Well, I got to be honest with you, I don't know what our flag policies are as far as flying them. I'd have to ask for clarification on that. Ms. Brace?
Counselor Darling, if I may, would have to comply with the flight policy, or an exemption should be requested, and I'll give you that information.
Okay, thank you. And it's my understanding that we're up to $10,000, so if all works out well, we will have all three flags up. All in favor of the motion? Against? Passed.
Counselor Darling, you still have the chair, but under Public Works this time.
Again, thank you, Worship. This memo is from the Manager of Environmental Services regarding the Administrative Building Roof Replacement Water Pollution Control Plan Number Two. The action recommended that council approve the expenditure of $135,977 excluding HST and consulting fees, and award the immediate replacement of the administration building roof of Water Pollution Control Plan Number Two to Lone Star Roofing Limited, which was the lowest of four bids received for this project. And I'd just like to make clarification here that it is Lone Star Roofing and not Long Star, it's just an error in the printing. I think this was put in our budget previously, and the contract is prepared to do that. All those in favors, or any questions? All in favor? Opposed, if any? Passed.
Your Worship, we now have Protection Services.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Worship. We received a letter of resignation from a member of the committee, so the action recommended that council accept the letter of resignation with regrets and advertise, oh, from Mr. Mark Burgess, and advertise for applications to fill the vacant position on the Accessibility Advisory Committee. Are there any questions? Being none, I'll put the question on the floor. All those in favor? Any opposed? Passed.
Do you have one more, Counselor McCarthy?
Yes, sorry. Yes, I apologize. This is a memo from the Chief Building Official regarding an Ontario building easement agreement for 84 and 92 Henry Street. And the action recommended that council authorize preparation of a bylaw which authorizes the mayor and municipal clerk to execute an agreement with Karen Louise Parker and Arthur Brunt Delgarno and Nancy Emily Delgarno to allow for a one-meter limiting distance easement onto the north part of the property owned by the Delgarnos, meaning as well known as 84 Henry Street Coburg. I'm just going to ask, Your Worship, would Director McGlashan like to shed some light on this for, in terms of the building code?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Dave Hancock, the Chief Building Officials, provided a detailed report, but in essence, in summary, the proposal is to recognize a few additional windows that the Parkers would like to have in their south exposure, which, under the building code, they're limited in the amount of windows openings, unprotected openings adjacent to a lot line. So the Building Code Act does allow, similar to the Planning Act, allows for some adjustments to occur. And in this case, as long as the owner of the property abutting, it does agree through an agreement that the adjustments can be made. So the actual amount of adjustment through the Building Code Act is one meter, and that is the subject of the agreement. The development meets the zoning bylaw in all other respects, it's just simply an exposed opening agreement on the south side of the dwelling at 92 Henry Street. It's just being constructed now. It's just being constructed now. I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Darling?
Yes, to Director McGlashan. With it being a one meter, I'm assuming it's a one meter extension, that there is still the one meter from the residence to the property line?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, to Counselor Darling, yes, there will still be a one-meter setback from the property line to the Parker's residence. The one-meter limiting distance easement is one meter onto the Delgarnos property, which they will essentially have an encumbrance in the form of an easement, but no structures can be built within one meter anyway. So they were quite happy with that, and really, the town is just a consenting party to a private agreement between the two property owners in this case.
Subsequent question. In regard to that, when you say there's nothing can be built to one meter, does that extend that if they were to build, if somebody new bought the property, and we're going to build an addition to the north, would they have to remain two meters from their property line?
Madam Chair, through you, to Counselor Darling, yes, there would still be some limiting distance calculations needed, but in that particular location on the Delgarnos property, it's the rear yard, which they wouldn't be able to build an addition onto their home. But there could be a garage, and if the garage had a window, they'd have to have some limiting distance or fire protection.
Okay, because that is a corner lot, so the actual layout of the property, it is a rear yard setback?
That is correct, Counselor Darling.
All right, that's news to me. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Burkett?
So does this agreement still hold up if two new people buy the houses?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, correct, Counselor Burkett, it's a registered agreement on title, so it would run with the property regardless of property ownership change.
Further questions? I'll put the, I'll call for the vote on this motion. All those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries.
Your worship, we now have Planning and Development Services.
Okay, we're moving the chair over to you, Counselor Burkett.
A notice of decision of the Committee of Adjustment, Minor Variants Application Number A-01-17, 254th Street, Andrews Lane, Coburg, Kurtz. Action recommended that council receive the notice of decision of the Committee of Adjustment for information purposes.
Are there any questions in regards to this? Seeing none? Counselor Darling?
Yes, thank you. I went to the property yesterday and checked the setback there. Is this minor variance because the building was constructed over the line? I realize it's an addition, but the property line runs on quite an angle, so it's almost like when they laid the property out at that small corner. So it's a very, very small portion of the building that there's an encumbrance?
Director McGlashan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes, you're correct. It's a very unique property in that it's set back in behind a number of properties on King Enbird, and the property is on an angle, and it was discovered that a small corner of the addition encroached into the required setback by 16 inches or so. So that was, it was a little offset, and that was a problem.
Any other questions for members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? A memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding application for site plan approval, Development Agreement TVM Coburg, Inc., 135 and 136 Orr Street. The action recommended that council authorize a preparation of the appropriate bylaws for presentation to council, which authorized the mayor and municipal clerk to execute a development agreement with TVM Coburg, Inc., and Lakefront Utilities Services, Inc., for a mixed-use development at 135 Orr Street and related parking lot 136 Orr Street. Remove the holding H symbol from the properties known as 135 Orr Street and 136 Orr Street. At this point, I would ask that Director McGlashan speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of council. I have provided a report for your review and council approval regarding the proposed application for site plan approval by TVM Coburg, Inc., and relates to the existing Royal Canadian Legion sites at 135 and 136 Orr Street. I have the map on the screen here for you. Mr. Amit Sofar from TVM Coburg, Inc. is here this evening and would like to make a small presentation to you, but first, I just thought I'd provide you with a little bit of background information, as this property does have some history. So back in the summer of 2014, the Ontario Municipal Board approved the rezoning application for the subject lands, and rezoned the site to a main central commercial exception zone for both 135 and 136. The property known as 135 Orr Street, which is the south property identified in red on the overhead, was zoned a main central commercial exception zone, which allowed for a five-story mixed-use condominium building, with the Royal Canadian Legion accommodating of just over 1,000 square meters in floor area, or about 11,500 square feet, as well as 53 residential dwelling units above and behind the Legion. The maximum height of development measured from the Orr Street side would be five stories in height, at a maximum height of 18 meters from grade level to the roof line. The property known as 136 Orr Street, which is the north property outlined in red, was rezoned to another site-specific zone category, which strictly and only permits a parking facility related to the Legion and the residential condominium complex at 135 Orr Street. So providing a little bit of history into this development and proposal for the zoning is certainly useful. Subsequent to this, the applicant filed an application for site plan approval in January of 2015, and incorporated a large number of studies, background reports, very comprehensive submission that was made to the Town of Coburg. These included studies related to archaeology, traffic and parking, urban design, heritage impact, geotechnical soils investigations, servicing, functional servicing reports, landscape design, and photometric lighting plans. So there's a very complex, comprehensive site plan submission submitted just over two years ago. A number of reviews have been undertaken by the town's development review team and partner agencies such as the Gannarasca, Region Conservation Authority, and we are certainly at a position now where the development approvals have been given, subject to some finalization of details by staff. At this point in time, what I'll do is, for council's benefit, I'll give you over to Mr. Sofar, who will provide you with a little bit of background as to the company and the proposal that is before you, and that'll be followed by some question and answers and some follow-up. So at this time, maybe I will ask Amit Sofar to come to the dais.
Good evening, everybody. And thank you very much for giving me your audience, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Staff has been very helpful in getting us to this point this evening, and it's been a long road. I've been before you a number of years ago, there are some new faces at council. I'm proud to finally bring this wonderful project to completion. I thought just for the benefit of those who are new at council, I'd give a very quick, brief review of our company. I know it's a long evening, and there's likely other business to be behind us, so I'll try and make it quick. The TVM Group is an Ontario-based company. We've been in business for approximately 20 years. We are in the ownership, management, and development business. The company owns a significant portfolio of rental apartment buildings, commercial spaces, and is in the development business, where we redevelop existing properties and develop new ones as well. Our portfolio has been, as I said, started approximately 20 years ago. Our existing rental stock is over 700 units, with a number of them here in Coburg and in Port Hope. We manage all of our developments in-house. TVM Coburg, Inc., as the proponent here, would be hiring TVM Construction Management, Inc., which is a wholly-owned subsidiary, to be the general contractor on the project, and that TVM Construction Management, Inc., is familiar to the building department here. We've done three projects here in Coburg over the last number of years as well. We're a long-term player here in Coburg, owning some of our properties now for over a dozen years, just in Coburg alone. Our commercial portfolio runs approximately 100,000 square feet, some again here in Coburg. We are in the business primarily of residential, apartments and condominium redevelopment, but along the way, there's some commercial projects that come our way. I think it's just important for me to get the opportunity to say to you that over the last number of years, our company has developed over 230 residential suites in Ontario. Number again in Coburg here, some affordable housing projects in Coburg, some affordable housing projects in Port Hope, in Peterborough, some luxury product in Peterborough, Sault St. Marie, and a little bit of work in Kingston as well. We've recently completed a large condo project in Sault St. Marie. Phases one and two of the redevelopment of the old hospital East City in Peterborough are complete now. And just to bring it very local, for those of you who are familiar with Dr. Power's school in Port Hope, we were very fortunate to be the successful proponent, to be funded with the Ontario, Canada, Ontario Affordable Housing Program, and we converted it into 24 fully accessible, affordable housing units, and our partner there is Christian Horizons. Here in town, we own one King Street East, wherein we developed 10 affordable apartments in cooperation with the Northumberland Hills Hospital, local community mental health center. We also own 256 Division Street, that we converted into 14 units for victims of domestic violence, second-stage housing in connection with Cornerstone Family Violence Center. Our Harbor Breeze project is a, I'd like to say it's a masterpiece, it's subject to, of course, everybody's definition of beautiful, but we're quite proud of it. The project started with our introduction to the Royal Canadian Legion about six years ago, and the need is that the Royal Canadian Legion, the existing structure is aging, is needing repair, it's in need of replacement essentially, and the membership of the Legion is such that a fully accessible, single-story at-grade facility would be far preferential. The Legion has been giving to this community for a long time, throughout Canada, of course, to many communities, and we are seeing a little bit of a resurgence in the Royal Canadian Legion, and I'm proud to tell you that we have been nominated as the preferred redeveloper of Royal Canadian Legions throughout Ontario. So now through this initiation in Coburg, we are now, have had the opportunity to work in a number of different communities with the Legions on similar projects. This is our lead project, and we're quite excited to bring it to fruition. We also recognize that there was a demand for quality residential luxury product in housing here in Coburg and in Northumberland County. There seems to be migration away from the crazy hectic lives in Toronto out to the more peaceful, feel-good town of Coburg and many others in the surrounding area. And I can tell you that we are well over 90% sold of our suites, and a good 50% or so are from outside of Northumberland County of our buyers, so there's a bit of a migration into town. Our development will be a five-story build. While we were permitted to go 18 meters, I believe our top height now will be just over 17 and a quarter meters. We've been able, with some efficiencies, to bring that down a little bit. The Royal Canadian Legion will have a fully self-contained space on the ground floor. It will have a fully independent entrance off of Orr Street, and there will be no connection to go indoors from the Legion to the building. So really, they are two separate structures married in one concrete build, if you would. The residential entrance will be to the south, south-facing, and will be fully independent again of the Legion entrance. Further, for the most part, parking will be completely separate. Once the building is constructed and the Legion moves in, the intent is to knock down, demolish, and remove the existing Legion building, and convert the north side of Orr Street, where the Legion currently exists, into a parking lot that is exclusively dedicated for use by the Royal Canadian Legion. Sorry, I pressed the wrong button. Our building is constructed of concrete and steel. While the Ontario Building Code would permit a wood structure at five stories, our preference is to build concrete and steel. So it will be a cast-in-place concrete with a steel-framed building. The utility services for the Legion will be completely separate from the utility services for the residential component. Really, as much as is possible, they're two completely independent uses and operating structures. We have a habit of building fairly environmentally efficient buildings. In this case, we'll have LED lighting throughout all of the space in the building and inside the suites as well. We'll have three garbage chutes for recyclable waste and organic garbage waste. All of the units, all the residential suites and the Royal Canadian Legion will all be gas-fired heat and centrally air-conditioned, rather than electrically-fired heating systems or fan oil systems. We'll be achieving a very high level of insulation throughout the building with spray foam throughout. We'll be using a very high-grade Marvin name-brand window, it's a fiberglass window, which has the highest level of insulation value that we've been able to find. And as a result of that, we've been able to bring to market a residential building that offers a very low condo maintenance fee. More excited about that. Indicated here are parking counts, there's 30 indoor parking spots underneath the building that are exclusively for residential use. Legion parking is on the north side of Orr Street and a little bit in the apron to the south of the building. The balance of the parking to the south of the building is reserved for residents and guests of residents of the building. In case anyone's interested in buying a suite, I can brag to you a little bit about the features of the suite. There are nine-foot ceilings throughout. The suites are large, spacious, with oversized windows, all of them have two, some have three, three-and-a-half bathrooms. They're highly customized, our purchasers are able to select from a wide range of high-end countertops, kitchen finishes, flooring. So really, we'll be bringing to town a very high-end finished condo, and we're hoping it's a new category creation and a real example of what can be brought to town when everybody's working the same way. One of the things that we build into all of our constructed projects is an increased level of accessibility. So of course, for the Royal Canadian Legion, everything will be fully accessible, it'll be at-grade, there'll be accessible parking right in front of the Legion and just across the street. But within the suites themselves, we build a higher level of accessibility in wider doorways, elongated commodes, raised electrical outlets, lowered light switches, a whole bunch of softer amenities that come into play more for someone who needs them, and they're not noticed by somebody who's not necessarily in need of them. So they're silent, built-in-place accessibility features. I have here a landscape plan, I know that Glenn is going to give you a far more detailed review, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I have in the center of this, on a horizontal plane, is Orr Street. The solid gray image to the bottom is our proposed building, showing you the parking to the south of it, and on the north side, it might be a little bit difficult to see, but there's a hatched mark, which shows the existing Legion building squarely on the north side parking lot. That building will be removed in favor of a parking lot that's dedicated to Legion use This is a rendering of the south face of the building. From this image, there's quite a grade drop from Orr Street down Hibernia as you go south, so there is, it helps us to create a completely separate face of the building, a different image of- So it helps us to create a completely separate face of the building, a different image of it, where the north side feels a little bit more of a commercial entry and the south side feels much more residential in scale. It's not my favorite rendering, but one that I wanted to bring, just to give you that sense now. The previous rendering, this one being the residential entrance or the south-facing entrance of the building, this being the north side of the building where there's a little circular driveway, an accessible parking spot, and more of a commercial feel which is exclusively the Royal Canadian Legion entrance. We are hoping to initiate construction with your approval. This evening, we look towards having construction getting started as soon as six weeks from now. We're just in the process of beginning to put up our hoarding around the site right now. We will begin our, there's an archaeological responsibility that we've got. That's slated to begin as soon as next week. Where we'll begin by lifting up the pavement on the parking lot and having an archaeological study done to confirm that we don't do any damage to any culturally sensitive material. Once that's complete, the excavation is ready to go and we're hoping to be coming out of the ground by, you know, late summer, early fall and begin to get the steel structure up very quickly. I certainly can brag a lot more about the energy-saving efficiencies within the building. I'm not sure how much time I'll be given and I'm more than happy to answer questions if they come up in connection with that. Thank you.
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Soffer. The, I'm just going to pull up a couple of slides here. So, Mr. Soffer has provided actually a very good summary of the proposal in quite detail. Some of these drawings are very difficult to read because of the detail and the level of resolution on these digital versions. But essentially, the site is very unique because it is split between two properties separated by a municipal road allowance. So there is certainly some challenge dealing with some logistics of having parking on the other side of the street. But of course, with the Legion now, that is currently the case where you have the parking on the south, some in the back, and people cross the road to get to the entrance. In this particular case, with the parking being reversed onto One Thirty-Six Orr to the north, there is dedicated pedestrian crossing points that have been identified to make sure that there are, you know, safe mid-block crossings and connections, both together with the intersection at Hibernia Street as well. With respect to the actual five-story building, we've got the Legion entry to the north with a drop-off loop and a barrier-free directly in front of that area. Across the road are another three barrier-free spaces. To the south, there's an access point from Hibernia Street, again, that goes into the residential component of the development with a drop-off as well. The underground parking garage is accessed, is located at the southeast corner of the building and some service and loading areas are farther to the west side of the building. As Mr. Soffer indicated, the commercial frontage of the Legion to the north will kind of invoke a little more of a commercial feel or institutional feel, given that it is an entry to the Legion. There will be the commemorative canon as well as some landscaping and decorative brickwork that will make it very much inviting for Legion members and the members of the public as well. The south entrance of the residential, as Amit has indicated, is intended to be a little more residential, informal, and welcoming from a resident perspective. In terms of the exterior of the building, the facade will be comprised of two primary materials. There is a honed limestone at the base of the building and certain step-ups along the facade to break up the mass of the facade. And also the red brick veneer, which essentially was intended to match the vernacular of the downtown with that same color of brick and style. Details of the building, including window sashes, banding, patterning of windows and other openings, colonnade projections and such are also identified to clearly identify this building along with entryways that are very, very clearly marked. There will also be balconies and terraces that will also help break up the facade with iron railings and upper-level step-backs have been provided throughout the building to also break up the facade and reduce the impacts of the building. From a financial perspective, the applicant will be providing the town with a cash in lieu of parkland provision of just over fourteen thousand dollars as well as the municipal tree levy of just over six thousand dollars. And if my numbers are correct, Amit, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but the total value of construction proposed for this development is approximately fourteen million dollars and approximately three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars will be collected in development charges and building permit fees on top of that as well. So, Mr. Chairman, certainly either myself or Mr. Soffer can answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from members of council? Counselor Darling?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't catch a glimpse quick enough of the parking lot at One Thirty-Six Orr Street. So I'm understanding that the Legion owns some of the houses around there, around their current building. Will those buildings be raised or are they going to be left and just the Legion building itself raised? Either or?
Oh, yes, in fact, those buildings are intended to stay. Those homes are intended to stay. They're in the Heritage District, so we never contemplated removing them at all. I did want to correct Glenn, our construction costs are expected to be closer to sixteen million dollars, total construction cost.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, sorry, just to follow up as well. The residential dwellings that outlie the current Legion actually aren't forming part of the site plan application as Mr. Soffer indicated, so they are totally separate.
Your worship?
Thank you, Chair Burkett. So Amit, I have to say that, you know, on behalf of those who were on council the previous term and lived through all that highly vocal opposition by a minority group who even went so far, some of them as to spread false information around the community, I'm glad to see that this finally is going to get developed. I think it's a good development and it'll serve the town of Coburg well. The only question I have, Amit, is have you made any arrangements with the Legion? As you're constructing a new building, you're going to take away the existing parking lot. And so how was the Legion planning, you and the Legion planning, to accommodate all that displaced parking?
Thank you for your good wishes. It's been a long road, as you know, and we're proud to bring this right to the end. It will be a bit of a challenge. I think as with any construction circumstance, we're going to end up with a challenge. We have a very good level of communication between the Legion and ourselves and so where possible, we will have some advanced knowledge of events that the Legion may be hosting. When we can get out of the way, we will be able to do that and prepare or provide a little bit more parking. But we've a little bit of a parking management agreement in place, soft agreement, not a written one, where we're going to divert to make your situation worse. We've got our construction crew that will need parking as well. So we'll be managing the distances that the construction crew parks away from the site to ensure that some of the street parking around the Legion will be available for Legion members on dates when that's important to them. It will be a bit of a challenge. We'll be working with them through continual communication throughout it. I'd like to say that we have a solution, but it'll be something that needs to be on a regular basis. I will say though that the intention, sir, is to have a good chunk of our own parking need met on the site other than days when there's construction equipment that prevents that, therefore reducing the spillover of construction-related parking on the side streets. And lastly, the Legion has a tendency to park on the south side of the lot because it's easier access. They do have a bit more parking on the north side with access off of Albert Street that they'll be forced to use a little bit more as well.
Thank you.
Your worship?
Just to follow up through you, Chair Burkett. So then, you will not be working seven days a week, just five days a week, I'm assuming? And a lot of the Legion events take place on the weekends, so that might, is that going to help with the parking?
Yeah, the Legion's need for parking during construction hours, which are regulated by Coburg's bylaws, is rather small. It would be the regulars at the Legion, those who are there for certain minor events, meetings and the like, and that usually can be managed by the lot that's on the north side behind the building now, which will remain there throughout. Our construction will be primarily eight-to-five type thing through the week and very rarely would there be one or two people there on a Saturday. We're going to be sensitive to noise as well. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Through you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Soffer, for your presentation. I noticed in the drawing of the residential, I noticed it almost seemed to be a Victorian-type lighting, which I was pleased to see. Do you know if that will be carried down either through you or maybe belongs to the town or Lucy? Is there any way that we will be enhancing our Victoria lighting down on Hibernia Street? And the reason I'm asking, because presently, we only have the heads attached to telephone poles at the present time. And I'm just wondering, was there any future thinking of changing that so that we have more of a conceptual standard design as we head towards the lake, especially when this building is fully completed? I don't know who best to answer that, whether it's Mr. McLaughlin?
Director McLaughlin?
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I may ask Mr. Thrasher to answer that, or if he is able.
The only requirement we have is that lighting be LED now. No more fluorescent or incandescent or the high-pressure sodium. It needs to be LED. Apart from that, developers have a fairly wide choice of the style of luminaire that they use on the top of the pole. But if it's going to be in a location that is in close proximity to, say, our existing streetlights, then we would have a comment on the appearance to make sure that they match. As far as moving poles closer together goes, that's a bigger construction project though and we don't anticipate doing that at the moment.
No, I'm sorry for any confusion I caused. I'm not asking you to move poles. Just the heritage lighting heads we have now are attached to the poles. And I'm just wondering if at some point, when this gets developed, if we could just have standalone standards with similar heads and get them off the poles. So it's more of a unified look through our town. Sorry for the confusion.
Yes, when it comes to the design of the street lighting and the yard lighting, that all of those plans and arrangements can be studied, so we can do that.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Chair Burkett, and thank you, Mr. Soffer, for the presentation. I'm one of the new counselors, so I missed what happened last term and I reap the benefits. And thank you as well for the attention to accessibility. I have two questions, one which perhaps you can answer and the other through Director. But is this site intended, and it could be, it's just escaped me to understand it, is this any generation or is it meant for senior accommodation?
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry you missed all of our fun over the last few years. Initially, when we did the study in Coburg, it was our expectation that it would be a more senior buyer coming into the building. That has happened, but our buyers really range from just over fifty, I would say, up until on in years. So we can't discriminate that the property is for sale. It is a for-sale condo. But I can tell you, I've met each and every one of our buyers and they range from about fifty years old to seventy. So it's a fairly active building.
And in that vein, I'm delighted. I think there's a lot of senior housing in that neighborhood. So, I mean, the buyer is the buyer, but I think a younger demographic is a good thing as well. My second question is to Director McLaughlin. We, at the Accessibility Advisory Committee, we looked at these drawings. Are these essentially the same ones or have there been significant changes?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The basic, I guess, building blocks and layout of the site have not changed, but some finer details and a lot of engineering work has changed. They've changed from running the sanitary sewer northward through the parking lot to Albert Street to back to Hibernia Street. So there's been a number of, I'd say, engineering and grading changes. But all throughout that revision, they've all maintained the barrier-free connection. So whether it be across the Orr Street crosswalk, it's fully accessible. All access points are drop-curved and the access doorways as well are fully accessible. So as are some units in the development. So I would say as it pertains to accessibility, all of those elements have remained the same, but a lot of other technical, maybe more engineering-related things have changed a little bit.
Can I just add to that? Just because of the nature of our construction policy, if you would, and we do so much of our accessible construction, we would be exceeding the OBC's requirements in many respects, not in all. But many of the units themselves, there are many, the hallways are a little bit wider, a little more luxurious and a little bit wider for mobility, five-and-a-half feet wide. The doorways are wider throughout the building, inside the suites as well. So we don't end our accessibility in compliance with the OBC, which is to have them as visitable. We actually have them as accessible in the suite as well. And of course, the Legion throughout will be fully accessible. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? For the next one, I just want some clarification from the clerk. I would like to leave the sixth item out of this as kind of a separate. So would I take that out now? For the CIP applications?
You want to leave it out?
I want to make revision and defer that one.
You could say save and accept that section? And not remove it?
Okay, so just say...
Save and accept that section.
So accept that section?
The sixth one, you said the...
Yeah. So just say the rest, accept that one?
Yeah, and just say save and accept that particular one and that's recorded in minutes, which takes that out, but it identifies it as having been...
And then do I give a clarification or why, or another motion at that point?
You could if that's your call. Are you wanting to remove it or are you wanting to deal with it separately?
Remove it.
Then you don't have to expect it.
Point of order, Ms. Bracey, is if I can make a suggestion, maybe the best thing to do is to modify the action to, and refer to, five of the six and then come forward with a separate motion to defer the sixth one with an explanation why. That way everybody perfectly understands.
Okay, and that's what I was just looking for, a direction on that. Okay, thank you. A memo from Planner One Heritage regarding the Downtown Vitalization Community Improvement Plan, 2017 Spring Intake. The action recommended, whereas six... So why do I change that, I guess? Five applications for financial support under the Downtown Coburg Community Improvement Plan, CIP, were received during the first intake period of two thousand seventeen. Is it six? I still say six. Okay, sorry, six. During the period of two thousand seventeen. And whereas the CIP review team determined that the proposed scope of work for each project inconsistent with the goals of the Downtown Coburg Vitalization Community Improvement Plan and meet the program requirements for facade improvement grant loan program and/or the building improvement grant loan program. Now therefore be resolved that council authorize this disbursement of the following financial incentives under the programs... incentives under the programs of the Down Coburg Community Improvement Plan, CIP. One, eighteen King Street East, White, eight thousand facade improvement grant. Twenty-six Chapel Street, Kemthorne, six thousand two hundred and fifty facade improvement grant. Three thousand four hundred building improvement grant. Twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-five building improvement loan. Three, thirty-four to thirty-six, Covert Street, Conaway, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five building improvement grant. Number four, thirty-five, King Street West, Trezolo, twelve thousand five hundred building improvement grant. Number five, six seventy-four, King Street West, Miller, eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars impro, or building improvement grant. And at this point, I say, say-
And further that the one be removed, the address?
And further that-
Or deferred?
Seventy-seven Albert Street, one-two-two-six-five-seven-seven, Ontario Limited, eight thousand five hundred dollars building improvement grant, five, fifteen thousand building improvement loan be deferred for staff report.
If I may, for a further report from staff?
For a further report from staff. And I believe Allison is here for a report on these.
It's my pleasure to come before you this evening and advise you of the applications that were received during the spring intake period for financial support under the Downtown Vitalization Community Improvement Plan, or the CIP for short, and to present a recommendation for the allocation of funds under that plan. Following on the successful implementation in two thousand and sixteen of this program, council allocated, as you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Holdco dividend to support the financial incentives of the CIP in two thousand and seventeen. The last time I came before you to discuss this, CIP, was to propose an implementation plan, and that was earlier this year. And that included criteria for evaluating the eligible applications, also a comprehensive communications plan to increase awareness of the program, including a prominent ad on our municipal website, regular advertisements in our ad block in the local paper, and a flyer that was mailed out to every eligible property owner in the CIP study area. Additionally, we've noticed that those who received funding under the program last year, there's been a lot of word-of-mouth support for people discussing amongst themselves the program and how it's worked for them, so that's been an added positive as well. Two intake periods were set for two thousand and seventeen. The first closed on the thirteenth of April, and the second will close on the twenty-first of July. After the first intake period closed on the thirteenth of April, there were six applications received, and all were deemed to be eligible for consideration for funding under the CIP, and that's as per the terms outlined in the CIP itself. The review team met subsequent to that, and the evaluation criteria, which is a weighted matrix of various criteria, were applied to further review the applications and ensure that they align with the priorities for the Downtown Vitalization Action Plan. The projects received during the first intake all fell either into the facade improvement grant or loan program, or the building improvement grant or loan program. Although there are eight potential eligible programs, and they are stackable, all six of the applications received fit into one of those, or in one case, both of those programs. There's further detail in my staff report, so I will just very briefly introduce to you the six applications that were received. The first one was for facade improvement at eighteen King Street East, which is currently, there's a commercial tenant on the main level, which is Ontario Vapes, and that's a facade improvement that includes re-cladding, potentially realigning the windows, we're still investigating that option. Twenty-six Chapel Street, which is the Eagle dot C.A. building, they are undertaking some building improvements and facade improvements on the, they're on a corner, but it's sort of the backside, I guess, of the building, or the side of the building, and that's to allow for an accessible retail entrance and to return some of the office space, back-to-office space. Thirty-four to thirty-six, Covert Street, there was an application there to do some roof repairs, that's, there's currently a dog spa there, and cats, I should say, pet grooming, and a tattoo shop, and the owners of that building are looking to do some roof repairs. Thirty-five, King Street West, this is the home of Chessler's Shoes, which just is in the final stages of completing a facade improvement, which was supported last year through the CIP. And this particular project this year is looking to now tackle the second and third stories and restore all fourteen historic wood windows facing King Street. Seventy-four, King Street West, currently a commercial tenant at the main level, which is the El Camino Restaurant, and there are fully tenanted residential units on the upper stories, and they are doing some roof repair as well, some rather critical roof repair, especially given her recent weather. And the final application that was received was for seventy-seven Albert Street, more commonly known as the Historic Jail, and there is an application to replace thirty-three of the nonhistoric window sashes with new window sashes. So the review committee recommended allocating funds, as detailed in my report, for a total dispersment of fifty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars in grant incentives, and a total of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five in loan incentives. The zero-interest loans that are given under this program are fully secured via loan agreements, which are registered on title, and repayable to the town over ten years at a cost of three percent per annum. As such, the total cost of the loans to the town is eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. This proposal will allow for a total of ninety thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents remaining allocated to the CIP under the two thousand seventeen municipal budget, and that will be available to support applications received at the second and final intake period of the calendar year, which closes again on July the twenty-first. Now, I don't have the numbers, having scoped out that final one, unfortunately, I can't do the math that quickly. Where a loan is not being recommended through a CIP, as outlined in my report, an offer for a loan under the Heritage Financial Incentives will be made to the applicant. This was discussed by the review committee. Rather than duplicating the application process, we're going to propose that loan be available to them. The Heritage Financial Incentives Program allows for a loan to assist with up to fifty percent of the cost of restoration and improvement of designated heritage properties in the town of Coburg, to a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars. And heritage loans are given at one percent below prime and are also fully secured via loan agreements registered on title. The Heritage Financial Incentives Program is not a component of the Downtown Coburg Vitalization CIP, and individual applications are not reviewed by council, so that's being addressed separately through staff. So in summary, the evaluation team recommends allocating financial support under the programs of the Downtown Coburg Vitalization CIP to all six of the projects that were submitted for consideration during the first intake period of two thousand and seventeen. The provision of financial support through these programs directly underpins the physical improvements being undertaken by property owners in our downtown, and we have seen a lot of momentum even just since the initial implementation of the plan last year. As I've previously mentioned before you, the survey conducted in two thousand and seventeen as part of the Downtown Vitalization Action Plan strongly indicated that Coburg and area residents wanted an improvement to the appearance of the buildings in downtown Coburg. And as such, the implementation of the CIP in two thousand and seventeen has prioritized support for visible building improvements and critical projects that are anticipated to stimulate further regeneration and vitality in our historic downtown that we're already starting to see take hold. Now, I understand just today, there was additional information received by council and staff with regards to the application for funding for seventy-seven Albert Street, which I believe is the rationale for suggesting the deferral of that final sixth application, but I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have about the project or the review team's recommendation.
Thank you, Allison. Counselor Darling?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Very well done. I have several concerns. When I was part and parcel of the CIP, it was my understanding, as you've just commented there, for building facades improvement, a lot of the community wanted to see improvements that made the buildings a lot nicer and so forth. Two of these are roofs. One, setting a precedent of doing every roof in the downtown heritage district, to me, is not a good idea. And a roof is the main envelope of a building. If you own a building, you want to keep the water out. And to me, doing a roof, especially on thirty-four, thirty-six, Covert Street, which is an old house converted into stores, to me, has no heritage significance, it's vinyl-clad building. I don't know, in my opinion, it doesn't meet the criteria. And secondly, the roof on seventy-four King, I formerly have experience in the construction industry, I did a lot of roofs in the past, that roof is probably ten to fifteen years past its lifespan, I'm surprised that the water's not pouring in. But again, that roof should have been done ten years ago, and if we start setting the precedence of doing roofs, one, the public can't see, the public has to put a roof on their house every so often, and I don't think that's the intent of the CIP. Eighteen King Street, we're going to repair the facade of the building, a couple of the others, Trezolo's going to take the wood windows out, board the walls up, fix the wood windows, replace them, we maintain our heritage district. Personally, I can't support it with the two roofs in there. At this point, I would like to make an amendment to the motion, that the two roofs be removed and voted on separately. If council so chooses that they don't, then I'm going to have to vote against all of them. Thank you.
May I respond briefly to some of, just to provide some rationale from the review team's perspective? The prioritization of highly visible projects was the result of the development of criteria to score the applications we received. It's not necessarily the priority of the CIP plan itself. So the CIP was, or is intended, to support private funding, the leverage of private funds into our downtown. In some cases, some of the owners applying, and I can't speak for all applications off the top of my head, but they didn't necessarily own the buildings ten or fifteen years ago when that work could have been done. We've also found that before a building owner is willing to undertake a large redevelopment, say, of the second or third stories of a building, or a major storefront facade, there are critical issues that they would like to first address with their building. We've not had financial support available to this degree before, and I think that what we're seeing is a willingness from some of the downtown building owners to invest in their buildings with the understanding that there is support there now from the town. But again, the criteria that we were applying to evaluate the applications was to ensure that we're prioritizing for a higher funding commitment, those that were in line with the Downtown Vitalization Action Plan, including highly visible projects and facade improvements. The CIP itself provides for eight different programs, one of which, for example, is a study grant. So it doesn't actually support really anything that's highly visible at that time. The others include residential, a residential grant and loan program, which is a cost per square foot of residential space being rehabilitated and converted. Again, that's not really visible, but it's certainly something that is important for our downtown. So there's sort of the two elements of these applications, the one being what's eligible work for support, and the other is how we've prioritized projects for higher funding commitment, and that's more the highly visible projects that we're looking to support.
Yes, I can understand that, and again, with the promoting the apartments indoors and people living in the downtown, I understand that seventy-four King has apartments existing in it, they've been there for years, and my understanding, when you purchase a building, you have an inspection done on it, and if it needs a roof, most of the time, they compensate the purchase price in regards to knowing they got to put a roof on it. So I still feel very strongly that we shouldn't be supporting the roofs, that the building envelope, especially the roof, should be looked after by the tenants. If you're building, you want to protect everything below it. If it had heritage significance, as did ten Spencer's, or pardon me, ten King Street, where the facade was cedar shakes, really blended into the downtown, then I would be in support of it.
Just through you, Mr. Chair, a quick comment about the heritage significance. It was certainly one of the criteria that was developed for prioritizing applications, but the study area for the Downtown Vitalization CIP is not limited to heritage areas. So just an important distinction to make, that there are quite a few eligible properties within the study area that have no heritage status.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Allison, and through Mr. Chair. The only question I had is with regards, sorry, eighteen King Street East. It indicated to install new cladding, light beige funnel wood siding to be confirmed. I just wanted to know, have you made any progress on, through the chair, have you made any progress on that in your discussions?
Sorry if I may, Deputy Mayor, we do have an amendment on the floor that we need to deal with first.
Apologize.
I'm going to speak to the amendment. Thank you. I vehemently disagree with Counselor Darling. I believe that the intent of the CIP was to make buildings more sustainable, to bring in, to make, to allow the businesses to continue or attract new businesses, and to bring residents and tenants into the town. Roofs are a big part of an asset that we own. I wouldn't apply a homeowner's standard to a business standard, but we all know that homeowners let the roofs go. Yes, people may take that into account when they purchase a property, but I believe the ripple effect we offer through the CIP, and who knows, we may be supporting ten more roofs, but what that does is it enhances the downtown, and if it's not visible, you know the building has integrity, because that, that project and that support that the owners are investing in as well means that the town is supporting its building owners, because for me, that's the difference between a business owner and a private home. There's a lot at risk here, but as we move forward, I believe it will cause others, just like we got through those studies during the CIP, there's a ripple effect, and I'd be delighted to think that a building in the downtown core, and it doesn't matter to me if it's heritage, if it offers a business and offers multi-use through tenants, and it's got a solid roof, then that makes it a more valuable property, and all of these owners are investing in it. So I will not support that amendment. Thank you.
Your worship?
Thank you, Chair Burkett. So Allison, again, my compliments on an extremely well-written report. You've covered off every possible detail, and it's my understanding, in fact, in the, when we approved the-
And it's my understanding, in fact, in the, when we approved the CIP plan, and you did present us with the criteria that were going to be used in terms of evaluating the applications. And this, all of those presented tonight certainly feel, you know, fit within the categories that you have identified and that we have previously seen and approved. So I, you know, I think that I'm, well, I know I'm going to support your recommendations, except for the one that we have deferred.
Counselor Segan?
Having worked with CIP for many years in my previous municipal life, I agree with what Counselor McCarthy has said about supporting the downtown, but I will support Counselor Darling. I believe that facade improvement and visual impact in our downtown speaks a lot further than replacing a roof. We probably have 50 roofs that could be replaced, and I certainly don't think, I respect Allison's rating on all of these projects tremendously. I think her work is impeccable, and certainly no fault there. But do we really have to take the first six that come along? There might be some in the next intake, and we don't have to spend it all on the first six that come? I will not support the two roof projects either.
Any other questions? Counselor Darling?
Yes, just if I may, I agree with Counselors again. Just because we put $150,000 out there doesn't mean we have to spend it right away. I too agree that there may be some more projects down the road once this thing's steamrolling. But I do think a building owner, when they buy these buildings, they're bought as an investment as well. And I think you have to protect your investment. I realize, I own heritage building myself, and to maintain that heritage building is very expensive. I do it because I love the heritage. But I too knew when I bought that building that I had a responsibility. So I think this one just kind of steps outside what we're really trying to do with the CIP. And I'm going to stand with my amendment. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy?
Through you, Chair, to whomever could answer. If council takes a position that we're stepping outside of the intent of the CIP, and yet our professional staff are using our CIP to make their recommendations, would it be appropriate that council change the CIP if we are actually not going to be funding projects that qualify?
Mr. Chair, if I may, the CIP provides basically the tools in the toolbox that council may, at their discretion, use. In any given year, you can say, "We're not doing any CIP programs," or however you wish to implement it. The fact that the CIP provides this broad range of potential projects that it could accommodate, essentially, council has that discretion to say, "These ones are more important than these ones." And we can pull some back, we can focus on others as well. So it's definitely not a matter of changing the CIP, because you've got the CIP in place, you have the discretion.
Thank you, Chair McGlashan. Counselor Darling?
Yes, just again, on the roof on 34, 36 Covered Street, Allison, do you know if that roof has been replaced? I went and checked it out today. It looks to me like the roof has already been done.
I haven't been out in the past week or so. I know that with some of the weather we've had, there were some properties, not necessarily just the CIP ones, but there were some critical repairs that were done over the past week. With regards to the CIP itself, there, under the eligibility requirements, the way that it's worded is that one cannot make an application for funding, for financial support, for work that has already commenced. And you must make the application to the CIP prior to any building permit applications. Now, in some cases, through pre-consultation with some of these applicants, they were committed to undertaking the work, they were obviously hoping for a financial support from the town, but there was a commitment that this is work that they were going to move forward with anyway. So in the month between council's forthcoming decision at the council meeting next week on these applications, and when they submitted them the Thursday before Easter, some of them have moved forward, I believe, with at least the initial applications to the building department, or possibly further work.
It appears to me that the new roof has been put on. I could be mistaken. The photos show a black roof, but when I looked at it today, it looked like a two-tone gamberg shingle, which is a fairly new shingle. Okay, thank you.
I believe Counselor McCarthy had a, okay, your worship?
Okay, so, thank you, Chair Burkhad. I just want to remind members of council that on the committee of the hall, February 13th this year, all of council unanimously approved the report that Allison had submitted to us. It outlined all, it outlined everything that we're talking about tonight. You know, it talks about, it talks about costs associated with eligible building improvements and restoration works. So, you know, that's partly, you know, that's purely part of what has to be considered. It doesn't always have to be visible, it doesn't always, if it's doing something with the structural integrity of the building, then, and we're preserving a building in downtown Coburg, then it's the right thing to do. And we, as I said, it was unanimously approved by council back then.
Counselor Darling?
Yes, I respectfully disagree, your worship. I do agree with the terminology and everything. It is very broad, and I guess it's each person's perception of what that meant. And in my mind, it was something that the people of Coburg can walk downtown and go, "Wow, that looks good. I don't mind spending my tax dollars on it." But I think we all received an email today with a taxpayer who is vehemently against the roofs. And, I mean, I had looked at this myself, and I guess that was the one that tipped me over the edge, because if one's speaking, there's probably a few more out there who agree. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of council on the amendment? Seeing none, sorry. Call a vote? All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? So it's defeated? Any questions in regards to the initial motion? Deputy Mayor Henderson?
That's right. I'm always pleased when I get properly corrected from the clerk, because I was out of sequence on that one. I apologize for my poor listening skills. Allison, I just know a while back, you were working on 18 King Street West. I just didn't know through the chair yourself, had any decisions or progress been made on that issue to date?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We've had ongoing conversations. We do not, last we heard, the roofer is, who is doing the work on the building, is also looking at quoting for the cladding work and the window realignment. And I believe he, in anticipation of the CIP review team meeting, we had some communication about his expected total cost for the full scope of work. He's not formalized that yet in a written quote. He's promised to get it to me this week. It being Monday, I'm hoping to follow up with him in a couple of days. However, the CIP review team meeting was, of course, a couple of weeks ago. And before that meeting, we had communicated about the anticipated total cost. So we have sort of an informal understanding of what the full cost of the project will be, to remove the insul brick, to use a cladding that is much more sympathetic to the Heritage District, so not the original vinyl proposed, but a form of wood siding. And we're also still looking at possibly realigning those windows. That's going to depend a bit on the interior layout and some building code issues that we have to examine as well. Preliminary conversations with the owners suggest that he's amenable to this, because the way that the CIP review team has structured their recommendation with regards to this particular project is such that if he does undertake this full scope of work, the cost to him is slightly less than what it would have been without any financial support to the town to simply do it the initial way he had proposed. So we've really, that's, in my opinion, if this continues to move forward in a positive direction, that will be a very good example of how the CIP has been used to undertake an opportunity here with an owner who is looking to do some work on the building, to take it up that extra notch and really do it correctly in a way that does enhance our downtown. So I'm, it's still, we're still working forward on it. However, I'm optimistic that it will continue to go in the right direction.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
If I can ask something, question through you, Mr. Chair. I know at this point, you're asking council for $8,000. Do you feel that is adequate if this proponent goes up a level, or do you feel it needs to be modified to, I don't know, nine or 10? I'm just asking. Do you feel it's a fair amount at this time, or will it meet that condition?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The maximum that we're allowed to provide to somebody under the grant portion of the facade improvement program is 50% of the costs, to a maximum of, I believe it's $12,500. Preliminary conversations, again, with the contractor, he indicated he thought it would be in the ballpark of $16,000 to do the full scope of work. Certainly, tonight, the recommendation from council is basically authorizing us to move forward with this allocation of funds. There's no obligation for the owner, for example, to agree. If they say, "Oh, I don't actually want a loan," or "I don't want the grant after all," you never know. So in this case, if you wished to make a recommendation that simply spoke to 50% of the costs as per a final quote, I believe that would be the same intention as what we've recommended.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions from members of council? Counselor Darling?
Yes, just a comment for the clarification of the press. I want to make sure that everybody understands, I am in full support of the CIP in regards to the other four items on the agenda and future CIP programs. It's just the two roofs that are kind of a burr for me. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, do we have to do an amendment for the 50%?
I would say, being Chair, working with Mr. McGlashan and, of course, Allison, that would be your preview, being coordinator. I'll leave that with you.
So if I, I would amend that. I'd just like to amend the 18 King Street East to 50% grant of the total quoted cost for the facade, to the maximum of, to the maximum amount of the CIP allowance. Twelve, which is $12,500.
I believe it is.
Okay, I'll call the, any discussion on that? Counselor Darling?
Is the vote on this amendment to the, yeah, okay.
So call a vote for the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? So at this point, I'll read the whole thing out again, or just call for the vote?
You have the original plus the amendment, which makes a full motion.
Plus the amendment? Okay. So I'll call for the vote? All those in favor? Opposed? I have a letter from Patrick Bonneville for Phoenix Genesis Investment, 1226577 Ontario Limited regarding the Heritage Harbor Townhouse Development requirement for a cultural heritage impact assessment. The action recommended that council refer the letter to the heritage planning staff for a report. Are there any questions in regards to this item? Your worship?
Thank you, Chair Burkhad. So the letter is dated May the 5th, and so it's my understanding that because Allison's report had been made prior to that, that the item number six was included as an approval, and it's because there is some discussion on the letter and being contradictory to the whole process, that's why you're deferring it?
There was this letter, as well as one that staff had received today in regards to possibly not taking the loan and just wanting the grant as well. As well as I received a letter not addressed to the rest of council, but to myself, in regards to this development from John Lee. So that's why I deferred the item six for staff to give a report, and we can look into this item further. Counselor Darling, you still?
Yes, just on this letter from Patrick Bonneville, if Director McGlashen could elaborate on exactly what he's asking here, that'd be a great help.
Judge McGlashen?
Well, yes, if I can paraphrase what Mr. Bonneville is saying in his letter, but basically a summary that, I guess approximately a year ago, in June of 2016, council approved a motion, a detailed motion regarding a heritage permit for the future development of the property, the JL property, which included a number of things, a requirement for site plan approval, but also a requirement that a heritage impact assessment be provided as the development is an addition, significant addition to an existing heritage designated structure within a heritage conservation district. So the owner wishes to, I guess he's contesting the extent to which this heritage impact assessment shall be in terms of its breadth of background information, opinions, analysis, photographs, and such, as opposed to what he's proposing is a heritage impact statement on the property, which apparently would be a little bit less onerous in terms of preparing documentation and review and opinion. So it's an issue that, my understanding is, through reading the document, is that it's a cost differential for doing different studies of that magnitude. And so it's certainly, you know, the CIP application does relate to some improvement as part of that heritage permit. And we certainly want to make sure that everything is all comprehensively looked at before we commit to, you know, approving that CIP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGlashen. That was my understanding of it, but I just want to make sure I was on the right path. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried?
Your worship, we now have community services?
Okay, Counselors, again, you have the chair for the...
Thank you, your worship.
I believe the remainder of the meeting.
We have two items this evening. First is a memo from the chief administrative officer regarding Phase Four Victoria Square Design and Public Art Selection. Action recommended that the council approves the final design as presented by SEMA Plus on April 17th, 2017, as the final design for Phase Four Victoria Square, Coburg Market Square. And further, that council approves the recommendation of the Victoria Square Committee and select the art submission letters awarded as submitted by Steven Cruz as the preferred public art, should the Phase Four project proceed. And further, that council directs staff to pursue funding under provincial and federal programs so as to allow the project to proceed. Any questions from council members? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Chair Segan. I'm sorry, I just lost my page, but I have been having technological challenges, and I just, I understand the report that was sent out last week has been modified, because I had made a note that I had been placed there as a member of the jury for choosing the public art, and I wasn't, I was facilitator. So I want to thank, I want to thank the CIO for doing that, because the jury, the jury process under a public art policy is very specific, and it needs to be, it followed the process to the letter. The other point I wanted to make is that the information in the appendix that provided a scanned copy of what was submitted by the artist for the public art project, I felt didn't quite give justice to what was chosen. And I'm pleased that the maquettes that were presented by the artist, Steven Cruz, are here because what that report doesn't contain is that in fact, every column is specific to a period of time in Coburg, and where they're placed is significant to the development of Coburg. And it does outline the materials of marble and granite and gold leaf unifying them all. But a tremendous amount of research was done by Steven Cruz about our story. And just briefly, the northeast corner has, where is it? I believe, I can't see all of it, but it's, it's, sorry. So column one in the northeast is the, is the natural landscape that was here and, and our Aboriginal ancestors. The column, the second column, which would go in the north, sorry, the other's the northwest, northeast corner, is the lion, which is our heraldry. And that's the formation of the town of Coburg. And then in the southwest corner, column three, has the apple and the horse, which is the Coburg's farmer's market. And that, of course, is, is a heritage site and long tenure downtown. The final column over there is the, down in the southeast corner. And it is, it's hard to see it, but when you realize how it's put together, there's a lifesaver, like an old-fashioned lifesaver that you would throw out. And on top of it is a marine animal or marine bird, like a goose or a duck, a duck. And then the white portion is a sail. And it points to the harbor. So these were iconic, wonderful columns. And the bands on each of them will tell the stories of the town of Coburg. And the script that will be sandblasted in, and it'll be large enough font, and the bands are all different. But that script is going to be done in consultation with the Museum Society, the Historical Foundation, and Alderville of our First Nations heritage. They will all be accessible, touchable, brightly colored, and yet unifying the downtown. So a long explanation there. I was privileged to hear those explanations. And I just wanted to be sure that the public would have a sense of the depth and breadth and unanimous choice by both the jury, the public art committee, and then the Victoria Square Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. I'm glad you did that. It helps explain the images quite well because a lot of people looking at them wouldn't have a clue. The artists did get compensated, correct, for these maquettes?
That was in the budget to cover off the costs of the jury process, which involved the, each, each, so just, how it worked was the Public Art Project Subcommittee came together with the tasks of choosing a jury. They were chosen, and they are independent from anybody on the advisory committees, and they had backgrounds in art. And it was a really wonderful committee. The minutes are posted on our website. I won't go into detail now. And they went from 12, what are they called? ROIs, EOI's, expressions of interest. And they boiled it down and invited four artists. And that's what's in Appendix B. And the four artists each made a presentation, very different from each other. Some, Steven prepared this and spoke with us. Another had a PowerPoint, all very different. But when it came, at the end of the day, by the process, the jury chose. I had nothing to do with that. They chose this one. And it was unanimous. And each of the artists were paid $2,500. That was, so it was a $10,000 piece of the, of the budget that was put away to cover off that cost because these artists put a lot of time and effort into them. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Okay, I do have one for the CAO. There is, part of this motion is that you're going to be looking at funding for this project. Can you give us any idea where that, that search will start and hopefully finish so that this, all this work can hopefully someday get to see reality?
Thank you, through the Chair, to the Chair, actually. The, right now, we've actually been receiving correspondence from Federation of Canadian Municipalities that the second round of infrastructure funding from the federal government will be released fairly soon. We're hoping that that has a cultural element to it and that there may be the ability to leverage that program. It very commonly, when the federal government comes up with those types of funding programs, the provincial government steps in to match it. And with the, the Canadian wastewater and water, clean water program, they actually, the feds actually came in at 50% and the province at 20, or 25%. And with the transportation program, which was the other program under infrastructure, they came in at 30 each. So we're looking in that kind of neighborhood.
Will we know by the end of the year, do you think?
My understanding through, is that we'll probably see something this fall.
Thank you. Your Worship?
Yes, Chair Seaga. So one of the things that will work in our advantage, and when, the first application we put in was a very high-level general description of what we wanted. We now have a complete detailed description with, you know, showing the three different event modes. And so as soon as any funding becomes available, we can pull a full package out and put it on their desk. And I think it tells a very compelling story, much more so than the original application.
Thank you. Any other, any questions? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? The second is a memo from the events coordinator regarding the Santa Claus Parade follow-up. The action recommended that council support the Santa Claus Parade and its current organizing committee by issuing tax receipts and setting up a Santa Claus Parade fund to collect sponsorship and pay bills. And further, that council will provide float building space and additional police support where required. Any questions from council? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Chair Seaga. Just my concern that a sponsorship cannot receive a charitable receipt. A sponsorship, they're getting publicity and note in the marketing. So I'm assuming that the charitable receipt will only be given to people who actually donate money for no advertising.
That's a good question. I'll follow up on that, but absolutely. Counselor Darling?
Just with the question, it says, setting up a Santa Claus Parade fund. And my understanding here is that the town will look after that fund? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your Worship?
Yes, Counselors, again, again, the town can only issue a tax receipt if it's a town-sponsored event. So that's, that's how it will work. And so the, the fund will be operated and controlled by the town.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Carried?
Okay, I'll now take a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Hall, Counselor Darling, and we'll reconvene the closed session immediately. Well, we'll, I'll give everybody, I'll give everybody a few-minute break because the press, the press may have some questions. So five minutes, we'll reconvene the closed.